It's seven o'clock, we'll start now. Welcome to the Harrisville City Council for January ninth. Thanks for bringing so much. Appreciate you being here. I am Mayor Michelle Tate and I'm presiding tonight. We're going to excuse Councilwoman Max Jackson. Start with an opening ceremony, pledge allegiance by Councilwoman.
Repeat, pledge allegiance, please. All right. Pledge allegiance to the state of the city and justice for all. Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful that this evening that we could meet here together, city and city council. We're grateful for this wonderful city that we live in. We're grateful for the opportunity we have to serve in this city and be able to listen and talk about the things around this area. At this time, we ask to bless those that aren't with us and we say this is in New York's testament.
We're going outside, there's our open office. We have two returning members and one who we want to hear. Can you give a full time from the office up here?
You raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Roy Griffin.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I would support, obey, and defend.
Support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the States.
The Constitution of the State of Utah.
The Constitution of the State of Utah.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Discharge, sir.
Say that one.
Will discharge.
Discharge.
The duties of my office with fidelity.
The duties of my office.
If your family want to take it, your house is a place of song. They're starting to honor ourselves. Everyone's excited to start a new year with any council members. I love some hearing. Item number four is our consent items. A is approval of meeting minutes from December twelfth, twenty twenty-three is presented. Does council have a chance to review those minutes and any changes?
Make a motion that we approve the minutes of December twelfth, twenty twenty-three.
I'll say again.
I have a motion in a second. I'll have your. Okay, motion here, thank you. Item B, discussion possible action and advice and consent to mayor's appointment, Mayor Pro Tem. So this comes around, I guess, whatever it is, like I do it every couple of years and had the pleasure of having Blair. Mayor Pro Tem sees us a couple of years and we're rotating, so everyone has an opportunity to serve the positions and see that he will serve again as Mayor Pro Tem. And I'm bringing it with the council as you wrote.
I'll make a motion that mayor's appointment for Mayor Pro Tem, let's see, Wise.
Thank you. Thanks for volunteering to do that. Yes, thank you. Item number five is business items. First, discussion possible action to approve the hiring of a four-time roster career candidate. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council.
I prepared a short one, just to give some background on this request. So back in July of this year, we adopted Resolution twenty-three eleven, which authorized an agreement with UDOTS to receive a safe sidewalk grant for twenty-four, twenty-five construction of a drop-off zone for students to enter the school from the south side, Justin Elementary. Since the completion of the project at the end of small offices when the project was completed, the city has since received multiple complaints regarding traffic issues and unsafe pedestrian crossings in the area. Most recently, as that's brought to my attention, the city council received an email from a concerned resident who witnessed some near misses in the area and requested that the city consider providing a crossing guard to ensure the safe seeing the students in this area. So staff in action for this request has completed the job description and received bids for the flashing light signage that would be needed to install this area. And initially scheduled with Weber School District to discuss the possibility of sharing the cost of this crossing. So we are actually, this would create a new position, so we're actually asking for approval to create a position within the police department and type crossing. And ensure the cost, potential cost savings with Weber School District would be subtle. That would supplement it, but even if they don't want to partner with us, we would want to, if you're okay, city covers the entire cost of providing. So this is not included in this fiscal year, so we would adopt it at the amended part of the budget at the end of the year, and then we would budget for it as a position or transition the next fiscal year. We, there is a crossing on twenty-five fifty, but it's provided, doesn't think it's out, doesn't do. So they provide full crossing there, so we, we don't. Typically in the elementary age that. When are we supposed to start this? As soon as we can get some structure, so that's what we're going to do. We estimated salary for the job description was between fifteen to eighteen dollars. Anticipated a two hours a day during school days. We didn't anticipate affecting the budget significantly, but it is creating a position.
Any further questions or discussion? Anything else? Nothing, staff, no. Open the action. Justin and your plan.
It would be a little bit higher. We've got three different options for lines ranging from six thousand to twelve thousand. For those slides. Again, that'll be the discussion at three county school district tomorrow. At this, they've been willing to pay half, so we can get them to pay that. Again, this wouldn't affect our budget in a way. Some money in the shares budget to cover that cost, but is only the amount to just go to sell. Cancel.
So what lines do you look for?
Just the switch on.
Please, why, which ones do you want?
I, I would go to the about six thousand dollar range, like especially with this crossing down. The other one, actually, that computers inside the flight program. And extremely essentially we get passing. But that's a switch on a pole. It's just about a few years check out.
Is there an E system?
Yes, yeah, there'll be a key system. You have, I'll get that one. I'll see, I'll see, sorry, I saw that. No, I'm starting to plot access to those boxes. Things and people say I just go.
So there's a few parts in this, obviously hiring a person. So do we have basically, at least that we're doing this half of the year? So sixteen, eighteen hours, how many hours a day is that usually?
Two hours a day, so we're anticipating, we don't exactly know, but we're anticipating about enough. The afternoon. Kindergarten is all day, so it shouldn't affect third. Passing. We should also mention that the timing, the reason is not only here because of the complaints received, but also we haven't been striking the road yet from the changes with the drop-off zone, so people want to get offended, so we can just include the schools of painting, striking portion of that, strike.
Yeah, so if there's a hundred and seventy-five school days of a year. That's about sixty-five hundred dollars per year.
I won't.
That's a, that's an eighteen.
And how many signs?
Two.
Do you know what, like, plus have you, Scott, or?
We, we had used the tech net that we used for market study. That's where we came up with the approximate cost.
That's good.
Anywhere to stretch. Are you ready for an option?
I'll make a motion that we approve the hiring of a four-time crossing guard and the funds for science.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. We need a call for this, please. Councilmember, so. Yes, Councilwoman Jack, in St. Jacksonville, Councilwoman Peterson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wise?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. A motion here is. All right. Moving on, item B, fiscal year twenty twenty-three audit presentation. I'm not sure who's going to present this.
Thanks, Mauro. Turn the time over to Rob. He'll be giving audit presentation for the game.
Oh, yeah, come up here and listen to Jenny.
Thank you for having me tonight. A pleasure to be able to provide these services for you. Maybe just to give you a quick introduction, I'm Rob Luda, one of our partners. I'll be, I lead our audit practice at our firm of HBME. We're located in Bountiful. We've been in business since nineteen eighty when we got formed. We've been performing audits and tax services, consulting, accounting, that for forty-three years. This year will be forty-four in April. So we've been around, we've been around the block for a while. One of the specialties that we have is government. I started my career in state auditoriums, office and got trained for over five years. Local county colleges and universities and all that stuff, so I bring extensive knowledge and experience with government. That's due to my other bottom understaffed, so we're excited to be offering these services for your city. Maybe give you a little other introduction. Our firm not only does this for Harrisville City, we do this for about fourteen municipalities. So we have strong experience in city government and one of the sponsors down at the UGFA conference in St. George. In fact, actually, Jessica slapped her for us. So you've got a good member to help with your finances. That being said, let's get into the audit. Because it's exciting. You guys, how many, couple hours? I'm sure you guys have read this from front to back, sideways and forwards. Before you, you have the independent financial statements of the city. Now, the, the financial statements are yours. The only part I have in this is I provide you an independent auditor's report at the front, and then I provide two more reports. And we're going to go over letter of findings and recommendations that I have for the city at the very end. Really what everybody's looking for, what your bondholders, the state of Utah, they want to make sure that your financial statements are done in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So happy to report that in our ten-year financial statements, too, we don't feel there's any material misstatements in here. We didn't have to give qualifications on the financial statements. I will tell you that with what we start, we did make significant adjustments in addition to a lot of changes from the prior financial statement that you received, but I will explain those as we go into a whole found that should have been reported fiscal year twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, but wasn't. But we've made those corrections with staff and also given training to everybody. I've had great conversation with the mayor. Session with your city administrator, something that I don't sound like I have heard before. I think they were a little scared when first got up. Explain the purpose of our management and those discussions probably should have been it should be annual, because you guys are the leaders of this, the city. So we're important. It's one of the things that we pride ourselves on. If we find problems on our cities, we don't take that to the others and say, hey, this could be applicable to you. What are you doing? Cycle of tier or what are you doing to cover it? So, so we do find extension of share with our municipality. So really, coming back to the independent audit for first page is a clean opinion. It's a we in the county world is called an we don't feel there's any material misstatements in your governmental activities, your business activities, and each of your major funds, all business type. Go, let's combine it. We made the adjustments to make, including conforming what it should be. The next section of financial statement is your management discussion. Now, this is a document that's really put together by Jessica and other senior management at the city. It's also the only spot in your financial statements that you'll get a comparative between what happened in fiscal year twenty-three and what happened in fiscal year twenty-two. Now, in fiscal year twenty-two's numbers, we have restated those calls to indicate here's the balances that should have been reported for twenty-two, not only from asset liability standpoint, net position, but also your revenues and expenses. Try to update those to really like, hey, here's what really should have been reported. So you're getting a better apple to apple comparison the options between the years. So really, if you have the books before you, do they have the books? Okay. I'll just refer to these. If you have the book, I'm looking at page seven. Now, this is a summary table on condensed financial information for your statement of net position, which is also a challenge. So looking at the information, your capital assets, if you're going to say your total assets, the government activities went from seventeen point nine million up to twenty-nine point four, and so that's a large increase, but the city issued out a nine million dollar bond. Which means you have nine million dollars more cash, because really that cash is still sitting in Science Bank as your trustee, and you'll drop to get a construction of the two projects that you have, the city hall and the other public works facility. If you look down, so you're going to see an increase in liabilities, sixteen million compared to six. Again, that's from a nine million dollar bond that's still outstanding, plus you have the previous bond, which this year you started making payments on the series twenty twenty-two bond. So your net position, looking at bottom line, from ten point six million up to twelve point six million in the governmental activities, in your business activities for the same process, you can see went four to five point two million. So you have a slight increase in your business type activities, which is your sewer fund, your stormwater fund, your streetlights, and your garbage. We'll talk about the garbage here. As far as you flip the page, there's a summary table on revenues and expenses, so you can see kind of what's happened between the years. Looking maybe just down at the bottom to keep this on a high level overview, an increase in net position of two million dollars in fiscal year twenty-three compared to a million dollars in twenty twenty-two. Your business type activities, there's your three hundred thousand dollar increase, hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars in twenty twenty-two. So overall, you're operating at a relatively healthy stage except for the government fund. We'll talk about that as one of the findings that we have. Look at the garbage funds operations. Their equity or net position balance is actually a deficit. Last year was about thirty thousand or forty thousand dollars. This year, they've lost another thirty thousand dollars. I think you guys approved a rate and then lo and behold, Waste Management came out with a rate that offset everything you guys tried to do. So you have to work with them. We talked about this on, some working to see, okay, what is Waste Management's plans that you, so you could plan ahead? What do we need to do to get this fund back where it needs to be, where it needs to be? Because this is considered state compliance, fine, you can't have a fault in a deficit position. You're supposed to budget for how you're going to cut out for state. Are there some other graphs and explanations on each of the funds? If you need a little light bedtime reading, you can go here and read the summary. It's Harrisville City. When you get into the statement of net position, this is, gives you more detail from the summary charts than we just did. And opens it up to say, here's the different types of restricted cash and cash flow that you can see is at fifteen point five million dollars. That restricted cash is you've got six million, six million dollars that hasn't been drawn upon your public works facility. So really, until you start big phase construction, that will probably stay up high, not only for public works, but city hall. But I think you issue them early, knowing that rates are probably going up, so better to get a good rate than sit and wait paying more percentage points in interest later on. If you look at your debt, you still have, you've got fourteen point four million dollars in bonds leases and compensated assets. But right in the middle of that page is before the total, you see a net pension liability. This refers to your investment, should say, your participation in Utah retirement system. Now that episode flows based on what's going on. Last year, fiscal year twenty-two, there was no net pension liability across the state, which means all pension funds per the actuary and per Utah retirement system, they had sufficient funds to pay everybody out. I will give them this, this is going to change and flow your contributing when you need to on a regular, bi-weekly basis with your payroll. So the way, the other way those could change besides regular contributions for all the member at base, they change by what happens. So, and investments can get good returns and we're funded. Happy to report, you know, if you look at the footnotes, you, the Utah retirement system is funded between ninety like three percent to over a hundred percent if you've got a public safety type of fire system. So you can see that Utah, Utah retirement system is managing the funds really well. If you start maybe what's going on places like Detroit. Industry and union type ones, they're not saying about twenty percent. So Utah's doing a fine job, but really for you, this is a paper entry, not something that you vote. So it gets hard in the statements when they start like, hey, we have a net pension asset and all of a sudden it dips and now we're back into a net pension liability. I've had one of my larger cities where last year this was a seven million dollar change for them. It was all paper. But it's the other side of that, you gotta have a double side when you're transaction. So one side is changing the asset the other side is either increasing or decreasing expenses. So just a point of that can change on your statements. Maybe what we'll do, let's just switch to the government funds, because this is what you as a city tend to focus on. This is what you appropriate budget for the general fund, for the capital project fund, for the road, so you have a heavier focus on these, and you probably get reports on the basis as to what's happening in these funds, where revenues at compared. One of the things we talk about the general fund, but we get page seventeen, actually, look back to page fifteen. One of the things the state looks at is they want to look at your assigned and unassigned general fund balances and any committed, and committed something you guys have designated, you don't have any fund balances that get committed, but they look at your assigned and unassigned fund balance. So you can see those totals are fifty-six thousand. What they do is that balance divided general fund operating revenues, which is on the force the pop-up page seventeen of five point two million. That mathematical calculation needs to be between five and thirty-five percent. Right now, if you do that calculation, you guys are at thirty-seven point three percent. So Ted, I think it was a finding last year, same finding. Issue, you've got, I think it's actually less than a hundred thousand. It's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars forward. A part of that, you had your property taxing increases and other stuff. Sometimes it's far, it's good, come in, you think you spent it. And then additional revenue sources kind of, or sales tax comes in, right, or don't want you participating. So that's one thing. I know one of the things that some of the cities do is they transfer more to capital projects, especially items on the dock, if we start funding, so we may not do it now, but we have a plan to like a five-year, ten-year plan. Let's start funding, so we don't have to fund all in one year. But really looking at that, the general fund is operating still healthy. They have a three hundred forty-five thousand increase per change in fund balances at the bottom of page twenty-two, capital projects fund. This is temporarily that, thinking, talking with Judy and talking with Jessica, we're actually going to create a debt service fund just to separate the activities of the capital project fund, capital, it's not projects compared to debt service. I think we'll set up a debt service fund is what I heard. So I think good move. So what will be anything that's related to that? Really, if you look at this fund, they don't report debt, they don't report assets. So the only thing they have that will move over to an internal, sorry, debt service fund would be the cash that's how you pay it every month with the trustee for your principal and interest payments on the bonds that happen in six months. So that's a little over, I think that's around two hundred thousand dollars cash that will move over to debt service fund. And then all funds will transfer to the debt service funds for, for rather than capital. So we can distinguish, hey, what's can be in transfer for debt service compared to what's being transferred for capital out for the capital project fund to remind to fill profits for the city. On page nineteen, you've got your budget versus actual or general fund, which is the main operating fund of the city. We, we look at revenues, revenues came in at five point two million, you would budget it at four point five million, so you had a seven hundred fifteen thousand dollar increase in those categories. You can see a large one came in from licenses of, it's up a hundred, four thousand. That really depends. The other big increase is a hundred and sixty-one, almost a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars more interest income. Rates in the PTIF were greatly up compared to one twenty-two. So I've got hit any that are really making a lot of the, the PTIF, which is where you're invested. If you look at the expenses, you appropriated five point five million dollars for this fund. Management has only spent, the departments have only spent four million, one hundred seventy-eight thousand, so you have a one point three million savings in expenses and trying to be fiscally responsible. Now, some of that is we just haven't had to raise in projects is hard to get, so construction contractors and so forth, they know some of your projects for those reasons, for some of the change. If we look at the next couple of pages, I went private, which is your sewer, your stormwater, streetlights and garbage. Maybe this point out at the bottom of page twenty-one, net position. Sewer's got a strong net position of two point one billion dollars, a million of dollars, but that is in capital assets. There's three point one million dollars to the stormwater fund, one point eight being tied to capital assets. Streetlights is forty thousand dollars and the garbage fund has a deficit of seventy thousand. So that's the one that you as council and management need to look at and say, what can we do to try and minimize that, get rid of that deficit fund balance? And then your internal service fund, which is the motor pool that collects fund, who services the vehicles and that for the governmental funds. There are six million dollar difference. They also the fund by as long as. Any questions so far? Hour and fifty minutes more to go. Okay, keeping this really just a high level overview, finish out before we cover the reports and other items. We've already talked about the pensions, so I'm not going to cover that. The notes go over some significant more information describes where your receivables are at, how much is in property taxes? How much do we have in this regular account receivable due from other governments and so forth? Let me cover note number thirteen on page fifty-four. Note number thirteen is our prior period adjustment. So I'm looking at your report from last year. As we started doing some of the test work this year, we noticed there was various tax revenues that weren't property taxes, sales taxes, franchise taxes that weren't reported in the proper, have those in fiscal year twenty-three, when some of them, because you received it in July, you received it in August. Those are months you have to look at. If anything comes from the state tax commission, it's a two month, two months behind. So anything that you get in July was for May. Anything you get in August was for June. So you need to accrue those two months. If it's others like property taxes from Weber County, if it's franchise taxes from Dominion Energy from If it's others like property taxes from Weber County, if it's franchise taxes from Dominion Energy, from Occupy Pacific Corp. And so forth, those are upon, so anything you collect in July, that's really for June. Those need to be recorded, that's receivable and revenue to be reported. Some of the other, so we know that some of those were. But the other things that we noticed is the payroll from last year. So not all employees are paid on the fifteenth and the thirtieth. Payable. So sometimes that pay period, it just doesn't end on six thirty yet. So we look at that first pay period in July and say, what period does that payroll cover? Sometimes you'll need just one payroll, sometimes it might pick up two payrolls. We noticed the payroll of the last year hadn't been picked up, so we pushed all of that funds back into fiscal year twenty-two. And said, we don't want to overstate twenty-three's operations, let's put it on what it needs to be. Now, the only fund I should have done that. Is really the gen. The general fund was more material. If you look at the line, Stewart fund was a thousand sixteen, the storm water was a thousand forty-seven. So really immaterial enough for those funds, but because we had to do it for the general fund, we made the decision, let's do it for all. So we're standard across the board. The big item. Two that you see there for five million nine hundred seventy-three thousand dollars. This is the bond. This is the one that flabbergasted me. The bond was issued in June of twenty twenty-two. It should have been reported on financial statements. That's a six million dollar business. As revenue in the capital protect debt service fund. And then this, the cash coming in, balancing entry, and then obviously you know, entity wide statements, you convert that all show, hey, we've got bond debt that's there. Uh, so we have corrected that entry. One of the other things towards the bottom, I know it's a capital asset that's sold the public works bill. Well, the land is true, but the building was kept with the city. So we've gone ahead and. The three, like fifteen thousand dollar building, I think it had a book value of a hundred eighty-three thousand dollars, but that should have been in twenty twenty-two. Compensated absences was another, we looked at policies for vacation, sick, uh, comp. And so forth with the city and looking at your policies and procedures, you have a potential payout for sick pay. So I think the vacation comp time stuff. But the sick portion was never picked up. Sick portion, if an employee retired, the way that I understand the policy, an employee retires from the city. They are eligible for a potential twenty-five percent payout maximum in sixty hours of vacation. Well, that's a liability we need to report, except previously was not there. So it changed your, your number to the government funds, seventy-five thousand dollar senior proprietary funds. Not that big, cause the sewer only has one employee and stormwater has two employees. So not as big a change there. But these are some of the things that, you know, some of these highlighting, you can read the rest of those. Some of the entries that we felt need to be there, there's an eight of it told that these shouldn't be fiscal year twenty-two. Sometimes as you find a couple, maybe one or so, but to find this many was, they reached was. Substantial. So hence the reason on the very back of. What we have done through that, cause it also affected twenty-three, cause a lot of those transactions were just left through on, on three. And I think part of this is you have your treasurer, your finance director, they rely at the auditor said nothing. Doing these changes. Now Jessica had the fourth right, first star says, I don't think the auditor is doing stuff right. Would you refer me to submit a proposal to provide solid services? Cause I actually do the audit fire station. And doubtful, so she knows what title to do. So there's gonna be some cleanup. That we need to have done. So this is part of the clean, one of the cleanup coming in. On the very last page, page sixty-eight, we have issued an internal control of financial reporting. And financial statement preparation or view significant deficiency for the city. Cause some of these reports just aren't being picked up, they weren't known, they weren't reported in my periods. So material weakness is the worst thing. I downgrade this to a significant efficiency, cause I think they're noted, some of the stuff maybe. Cap bases rather technical term for the reports, but if we want to issue reports with gap. We need to be on a full overall basis of account for all funds, hence the liabilities for payroll. Now, if it's debt or capital assets, those don't get reported. That's a conversion entry, one of the weird things about. How do you do that? Two CPAs now. I saw you probably won't have problems, is this gap be thirty-four, that's a reckoning, these entity wise statements that we talked about in front, probably beyond the exam. What if they get full blown concrete and simple? That have, here's all your staff for your government funds, here's some conversion or conversion entry, how you take it from the fund statement up to the end. So to say it's, it's different, we'll need a new staff that are never to go, it's like, it's regular accounting, except for assets and debt don't get reported. The pension liability is not important, general fund, it's not reported in the capital project. Cause that's considered a lot of trouble, so they don't sit there. So really it's a finding, I think you've got the skills, knowledge and expertise with the staff on hand, we give it Jill. Uh, Jessica, uh, some training, here's some guidance, this is what we would do with the funds, some things you need to look at. So I have full confidence that they can take uh, the steps and the journal entries that we've done for fiscal year twenty-three and those related to twenty-two. And they can reproduce that fiscal year twenty-four and make sure the books are in a lot more solid state. And that you on a monthly basis will get more up to date financial statements. Uh, I know Jessica's already reached out, what do we need to do for fixed assets? Cause part, so we picked up that you signed a lease in September twenty for two vehicles. None of those were picked up on financial statements at all until this year. So. Don't know why some of those. But then we could come and help straighten out some of these items. Maybe just to finish up, we've got two more towards the back. One is on your internal controls. Over financial reporting and your compliance with laws and regulations. Grant, state grants, federal grants, uh, you receive article money that had a very broad range of what you could use it for. There's like three things that can't be used for, and one of them is like, whatever do that? Who's gonna fight having COVID vaccines and other things and do campaigning against the federal bill? Going to sell us one, see the other one, can't spend it on anything to retire. Contributions that you can't just pay that other, it's free. Uh, wasn't started up that way. They started out infrastructure type projects. Uh, then they opened it up and said, as long as you're covering, go from plus than ten million dollars of it, you're fine. Uh, we did have a couple of items. And that we did know was state code. I pointed out the one, your general fund balance, signed and unassigned was at thirty-seven point three percent. So you're a hundred twenty thousand dollars over on that. That's our favorite font again, cause that just tells you, if you've got a little extra money to spend. Uh, the second one was on the garbage fund, we'll talk about that, their deficit fund position. So you need to look at, how can you start to that fund? Out of the deficit, is that a transfer? Funds to help out, or is that to reduce the rates over the next year or two, up to help cover that deficit? Cause unfortunately you don't service your health pay for it. So you don't have as much control over the cost. Any questions? I know this has been a lot, but any questions that I can answer? I know one of the things, we're gonna issue a separate letter and that separate letter at the very back will be attached. When I got the trial balance to start the audit, here's the journal entries we made to that trial balance now. It's significant, this is eight pages long and there's about twenty-eight to twenty-nine journal entries on that. But I think they learned a lot about how does, how do these work? I mean, Jessica comes from a thing where it's proprietary, she not having to deal with those lots of hasn't dealt with that. How long have you been waiting for it? A while. So it just takes some learning of what needs to be done almost. We've given her that training, that will help and it should be available this forward, you guys will be just fine next year. But she can always call me, you guys can call me if you have questions. Or available to reach out to and consult if you don't, if you've got something that needs to be adopted or so forth. Or a question, how to report this, yeah, I remember having to phone call up front and try to figure out, this is what you should have done. What did you do? And then how do we correct that? So go ahead and reach out with uh, turns questions that might be had.
Thank you. Any, any questions, sir? Mr. Wood, we appreciate you coming in and helping us. Cleaning up. Well.
Yeah, it's not a death sentence. Uh, this shows you that, hey, we need to design some controls over. How we're reviewing possibly like, what can you journal entries, hey, does that make sense? Making sure our ancillae should they're tying that general ledger? And that we're getting the right controls. So like I said, state tax commission is two months, those go, those are positive. PTIF, so those are easy. The reason we usually can't start about only that final tax payment. You're on the, be your B and C, you're on a month six. Usually they hit fifteenth or so August. This year they were a little late in September. That's also a big rule. That you need to pick up. That might be one more church, we have to do that final payment wasn't picked up, cause it was received in August, they thought it was church. It's not, it's for the final payment we're talking for. And both of those, you can look on UDOT's website for their information regarding city. You can also find all the sales tax and those that come from state tax commission on their website. They started putting, it's like, cause they got sick, I think to the audit conference, it came and replied, I was like, you put up. Self. Sounds great.
Thank you. Do you need to, this or just accept it?
Usually most, 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 most cities will do a motion to accept the, that's the end of the state auditor's office. I don't think it's required, but most cities do. All right, okay, thank you.
Seth, you. I was looking for Shannon.
Perfect, motion accepted.
No, I.
I think she carries. Thank you again. I know that's a lot of work. That's sweet, he was a, I appreciate that. All right, moving on, we have two new six public comments. Right, I'm just gonna skip right online up. Has some more. Oh, thank you. Uh, anyone online like to say anything right now in public comments? You would have three minutes and now would be the time to do that. Moving. I'm still going to. Uh, item number seven, Mayor Council Fola. First of all, we will, um, just keep listening, do you want to consider?
Have a chance, uh, right now, we did just receive a grant for. Car cameras that uh, the states will pay for few new car cameras. Um, other than that, everything's been, been pretty quiet. Doing a lot of uh, enforcement for parking for Justin's crew to be able to plow the snow and. They got out and did a pretty good job. The last storm, obviously they have another one coming tonight, so the two departments are really working together, trying to get that so the citizens can get their roads plowed. So other than that, we don't have a lot going on.
Patricia?
Very, so. Um, on a good note, we do. We have moved forward on public works facility. If you guys, if anybody's drove by the seven fifty west property, there, you can see some equipment out there. We're gonna start moving there hopefully next week. So that is under way, we have a new contractor on board. With some really good news and really excited to move forward with this contractor. And start building, uh, as you know. We haven't had a storm that's dropped eight to nine inches in four hours, five hours and quite some time, we were quite. We knew we were gonna plow the other night, we just didn't know the big stage. Um, we've done a lot, the last two days of cleanup, we've had a lot of help from. Admin staff, putting in work orders from calls from residents, getting out there, cleaning up areas that we just couldn't like get. Totally push it back. Um, so we've taken the backhoe out and the skids here out. Made sure the tracks at the point. Got the. Things that we, we don't essentially do on Sunday when we did get called out because. It's overtime and that track be fiscally responsible. Get the city streets cleared, get people safe around. Get my employees home and I'm on radio, we'll come. Clean up the last little bits that we. Didn't hear any major accidents from the storm Sunday, anything building. You know, we, we did the best we could. It was a long night for a lot of us. We came in at one o'clock and. Left right around one o'clock, came in one o'clock, Sunday night, or Saturday night. Sunday morning at my home about one o'clock, Sunday after, so. Twelve hours. Quite a, quite a good push and my, uh. Cause we spent the last two days cleaning up and we're geared up for what's coming to us now and the rest of the week. Any questions, concerns? Let us know as I, a few council members, uh. My cell phone is always on. If there's an incident where we begged somebody in or something needs to get up, just call me. Call my cell phone, give the residence my cell phone number. Um, that's probably the easiest way to get quick response and direct contact and we'll be out there as fast as we can. To rectify any problems, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just a quick follow-up with that audit presentation. Uh, thank you to Rob Wood and also kudos to Jessica. She's been um, unemployed here for a little, two years actually. And I believe in November of last year and immediately as we brought her. She started filling in the gaps and noticing things that. Of the block had questions on and so we, we talked even before last year, the concern that we had that things were not being reported. From the end of financials. And so as we. Completed that year in fiscal year twenty-two and started into twenty-three, we fully anticipated. And with the beneficial to us, we wanted to hold ourselves accountable to make sure that the city was moving forward appropriately. And so as much as it was a. Gut punch tonight to hear all that they have, we were clear. Clean the slate and move forward as we have a lot of other things. Moving forward for the city. So I, I did want to emphasize all of the effort that she and Jill put into providing the information for the. And working through spends on their, compare that. I mean, we have. Business that I have to, we're similarly third for tree that will be holding on January twenty-third from six to eight P M at the cabin. Uh, we'll be. A couple of times, we'll be doing training, we'll be having some budget discussions, we'll discuss this audit. Projecting twenty-five, this will be your five budget and drawn to your pension smother. Since the name of the works building and even some discussion on city hall, please serve. For that, so we'll try and keep it to two hours. There's a lot to discuss in that timeframe, but we just want to. See that that's uh, coming.
Six o'clock.
It's starting at six, we'll, we'll have a quick light dinner. Discussions and bring some of that training for us. Discussions about the budget and other.
Thank you. Brody, do you have any time?
Love now.
Okay, thank you. Uh, that's where you want to. Thank you.
We had a great um, senior lunch in today. And it was really quite fun and it was almost like a legal lawyer. And a big lot of energy over there. And a lot of new faces came out, kind of seeing it. So I'm thinking, a couple of things that I want to do is set up a. A phone tree, uh, and email service, several people say I can send them to remind me to come. Glad several people last week is we were going to church and things like that, saying, I'm planning to do it every two stays, I'll get some of the way. Find it again, something gets in the way. So my crushiness is the work is getting out. And this is what we're having, this is what we're calling, so. And everybody seems to like the format, so it was a weird movie situation.
Thank you. Uh, can we, do you have any good then? I don't. Customer discussion? That's very warm.
Hey, you seen her, the uh, with the committee or the ladies of the pitchers? You're.
Oh. I didn't know that. Straight me, is that you?
Yeah, that's what we.
I got lost in the, so last month. I got lost in the, so last month. I took having a new day, so I have a new year, we have some goals that I encourage you to make some goals for yourself as far as the city goes and. Do some, some fun things, some exciting things sent. Um with that, we are going to move on to item number H, which is a closing executive session. I would be hesitant, whoever makes that motion, would you please state the reason for the closing of that session? And then I will enter that one for you.
I'll make a motion to go into a closed executive session for the purpose described under UCA. Five two dash four dash two oh five, one C, strategy sessions to discuss pending or reasonably imminent litigation. So.
All right, I'm going to second, I need a real cup. So, Councilmember Chris, is he?
Yes.
Councilor, council, Councilor, yes. I will excuse another minute, not anything to say, we'll have to soon, maybe.
It's Jacky.
Well, now I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second.
All right, favor? Thank you.